I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. First up is reporter, the chairman, and we have some personnel changes here that I'd like to acknowledge first. First is to my left is now our interim superintendent, John Batista, who took over from Jim Augustine, who retired last month. And taking over as our assistant superintendent is Jack Zamri. So we appreciate that and welcome you.
Welcome.
Great. Next up is we have the Shelton Monroe swim team, the Rapids, here this evening, and we'd like to acknowledge you with much gratitude for your donation of the six new starting platforms for the Massic swim team. So we have Kathleen Didiel? Okay. Robert Cristiano and Kara Natcholi.
Natcholi.
Perfect, thank you, sorry. If we come right over here. You'll be on camera and have your picture taken, and we have a little certificate for you.
Thank you very much. We've always had a real good relationship with about this, and their support in our school, so it's really appreciated. Thank you very much.
And feel free, you don't have to stay the whole meeting. Sorry, we had a slight delay this evening. All right, moving on, we will do the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, David, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. John, would you like to talk about our resignations and our appointments?
Sure. Every year, we have some resignations that come as a surprise, so these three are a surprise. Each one of them have very good reasons to leave Monroe, and we're gonna miss them. We have been very fortunate when it came to hiring this year. We have really got some top-notch people who've applied for our positions, they go through the rigorous process, and so we have these new appointments, and you can see, you know, we've covered what we think are most difficult ones, the two Spanish positions, we have staff members for that, and the two special ed positions. So when we get to the part of the agenda, Jack's gonna talk about what we have left, but we've been doing really well with the hiring.
Great. Do I have any questions on these? Anything on the consent agenda? Great. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and we don't have any Massic ones this evening.
They'll start the second meeting in September.
Yeah. We did have a finance committee just meeting this evening before our Board of Ed meeting. We talked a little bit about insurance, as everybody saw from our board packet this past week, insurance is not looking very good, we're, yeah, really rocky. It's making me very nervous, I almost had a heart attack when I read that. So we talked about that. Our new broker is on top of Cigna, it's really a Cigna issue at this point, so, you know, they're right on top of them, pushing them hard to fix the problem. We did have an update on our Stepney roof, and did I pass the pictures back to you?
Yes.
Okay, so we're about a week ahead of schedule, and John has, that he can pass around the progress report and some pictures of the progress that the Stepney roof is coming along.
And it's also online on our website, under the ...
Rule 27 resource.
Yep. Budget, where there is no decision out of Hartford, there's no anything out of Hartford. So we are just moving along with what was approved by the voters of Monroe, and have spoken many times to the Board of Finance, and we are moving along with what we have in place until we hear otherwise, and hopefully, we will hear something before September. Negotiations update, we will talk about this later in the agenda, but we are finalized with all the union contracts that are currently up for negotiations this year, everything is settled, and we will be voting on three of those contracts later on in the agenda. The fourth one just got closed last week, so we just didn't have it ready yet for this evening. And then our end of year fiscal year, we will have some money that we have left over because of the freeze we put into place, because of special education we were so worried about. We're hoping and we're working with the Board of Finance to get that money into our insurance reserve to cover some of the shortfall there. And we still do have the backing money from the town on the policy of, for insurance reserve, so. And that's pretty much it for finance committee. Did anybody have anything else, committee reports? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to our public participation, if anybody would like to speak. It's summer, we'll go with that. Oh, I'm sorry, I also forgot to acknowledge in the chairman's report, and I'll pass these around. We got three thank you cards, and I also got a thank you email from retiring staff members thanking us for the plates and their recognition. You wanna start?
Sure.
I forgot to mention that, so we got about five of them. John, you reported the superintendent for the first time.
All right, first report. So first of all, Gabby's gonna review the fund statement and make us all know.
We sort of talked about the major things with insurance. As Donna mentioned, June was kind of a really rocky month, we had about a million dollars in claims, and one of the issues with Cigna is they were supposed to be telling us when we had large claims, and they managed to tell us about $196,000 worth of claims, and somehow, the other $800,000 really didn't strike them as large enough to mention. So we have a meeting set up with Cigna on Wednesday, with the VP who is in charge of our plan, and with his boss also. So hopefully, we'll get some answers and we'll see what's going on, and maybe we can, you know, get a little, get them to work with us a little bit better. And we've been with Cigna since March of 2010, so it's, you know, seven years, it's a long time to be with one company in this day and age. And, you know, so far, we've had a really good partnership with them, but this is, it's getting a little nerve-wracking, to put it mildly. We can't pay another million dollars in the month of July, that would just be not good. What we did do is we did cut a check out of the operating budget to pre, to front-load the insurance, so we do have a million dollars sitting in the reserve account right now. And we'll have to do some accounting stuff to allow it to flow the right way for our ACA reporting, but that, so, right now, we're okay.
Excuse me, is Rob and Brown and Brown representatives gonna be there, Rob Fitzpatrick? Okay. So we're covered that they're all gonna be there too?
Yeah. We have about 20 purchase orders left to close, right now, it looks like we're gonna return a little bit over $200,000. The bulk of that came from savings in a couple different places, primarily, some things like we didn't hire an intervention tutor at the, you know, when one of them had quit, we didn't hire a new one. We had some savings with office personnel, where we had a person who was slightly more expensive retire at the end of last year, and as you know, we budget in December, so if somebody retires and, you know, doesn't announce their retirement until June, we're gonna have a little bit left over in that. We had money left over in extra work certified, those would be because we didn't run some summer institutes last year, things like that. And then also, things, we had some money left over in conference courses, a little bit left in technology-related repairs and maintenance, so I guess our machines aren't breaking as much, which is kind of nice.
And again, it's because we put that freeze on in the middle of the year. With that freeze, you know, it came at a cost. We didn't do some PD, we did no, you know, we did very little PD at the end of the year, we really looked at overtime, so some things that we could or should have done, we kind of postponed a little bit. So with that freeze, we have come up with a purchase auto show a little over $200,000. Not bad on a $50 million budget, you know, it's a pretty good budgeting.
Right. So I mean, basically, as Donna had mentioned, we'd like to put some of that towards the medical reserve account, because we definitely need it there. We'd also like to make sure there's some left in the capital maintenance account, capital reserve account, because, don't forget, in nine years, we have to replace the carpet on the turf field, and while the economy isn't so great now, I just can't imagine that the town is going to want to bond for that, so I'd like us to start saving some money towards that at this moment.
I mean, that was part of the conversation with Jim, and so, you know, we're on our way to do that, so that's not a problem.
Right. And we'll probably, we do have to replace a tractor here at the high school, we have an old, an older Mahindra that we'd like to trade in for a new one. That was actually on the capital plan, that was in the budget for the capital plan, if you remember, that was one of the items that were cut when we cut the million dollars.
Yep.
And so Gabby's right now looking at, in her department, looking at the budget, this current budget closely, and see where there's some savings, and we, again, I talked about the resignations, so we did have some last-minute savings, and I'm gonna talk later about how we might be able to use that for fifth grade band, so that's coming up. Staffing, Jack, where are we with the hiring?
We ended the year with a total of nine vacancies, seven of those are filled, we have two positions remaining, one is a special ed vacancy at the high school, and the other is middle school chorus, so those are in process, we hope to have those filled in the coming weeks.
Great. We also examined our stipends, because if you remember, part of that million-dollar cut was $5,000 in stipends, so we did examine our stipends. This year, we did not run regular ed summer school at the high school, we didn't have enough students, so we saved some money there. We do not have a climate coordinator this year, Jack Zamri's gonna work with the state on that, so we saved some stipends there. What I'd like to do is to use the money that we saved above and beyond the $5,000 to give the coordinators, the K-5 coordinators, who are now in the classroom, stipends so that they continue their relationship with the state in math and science, especially the science, because we're looking at the new science standards. They can still do professional development, and we have every Tuesday meetings, and they can run those Tuesday meetings, because they're the expert in those fields, so I'd like to take those stipends that they would have gotten even when they were full-time K-5 coordinators and give it to them in their classroom. Means they'll have to work after school, and they're willing to do that on PD day, so I'd like to do that, okay?
That's fine. Everybody's good with that?
May I ask how much they are roughly?
Uh, Gabby, are they 3,800 or 42, something like that?
I wanna say it's like ...
It's either 38 or 42, something like that.
Either 38, 15, or 42, 19.
I know, but I can get that right.
That's fine.
The other thing is, in the May 15 meeting, Jim talked about kindergarten numbers at Stepney being lower, and they're still at 53, they're still low, and so what we really need to do is to look at the special ed services at Monroe Elementary School. A lot of the preschool kids that have serious needs are staying at Monroe Elementary School because we trained a lot of the staff, but with the existing staff in Monroe, we don't have enough to cover the hours and the IP. So we'd like to do is take, and Jim talked about this on the 15th, we'd like to go forward with that, take that kindergarten teacher, which still puts Stepney at 17 kids a class, so it's still a fine number, and move it to a special ed at Monroe, so if I can go forward with that.
How many special ed teachers at Monroe? Great, great. So this would be a fourth.
Be a fourth. So go forward with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. The other things that we just want to mention are the CADE reports, you know, we've done a few things well in the district, and this is just another way that we're getting recognized. The first one is we have an award of excellence for the superintendent's newsletter, so we submitted that, and we got the award of excellence for the newsletter. We're now gonna call it the Monroe Public Schools Community Newsletter, we're gonna change its name a little bit, and we're only gonna have it come out three times a year. There has been some discussions about, well, with the budget being the way it is, maybe we shouldn't do the newsletter or do it online. So Jim and I go to the, last year, we went to the senior center to talk about the budget, and every year, we go, and at that, at that meeting, they had their breakfast, their luncheon, we had somebody stand up and say, oh, we love the newsletter, it's the only time that we really know what's going on in the district, we don't, you know, they don't have school messenger because they don't have kids there, it's what we know, it's the only time we get to know what's going on in the district, we'd like to be proud of our district, so keep it coming. And matter of fact, I think Jim said, well, there's some talk about not doing it, and they were not happy about that, they really wanted us to continue to do it. So we're gonna continue to do it, you know, it's about a $6,000 cost per newsletter, we're not gonna do four, we're gonna do three this year, the first one's gonna come out at the end of August, early September, we'll introduce our new staff. They really feel like it's worked, and we, and we got this award for it, so that's pretty good, and I have to tell you, we, somebody from CADE came to present us with the award, and she happens to be a board member in ...
Another district.
Another district, and Donna was there, and she said, you know, I'm gonna bring this newsletter back to my superintendent, because it is really a good way to share the information in, with the town. So we're gonna continue to do that.
Yeah.
The other one is, we also got an award of excellence for our budget book, congratulations, Gabby and her, her team for this. What they felt is that our budget book is transparent, that people could see what information was there, it's online, so I know Gabby works really hard to make sure that everything in that book is very transparent, so congratulations for that. And the other thing that we got was honorable mention for our website, and again, that's Jack and his team, they felt that the website was easy to navigate, that it had a lot of information, that, you know, people would like going there to see what's going on in the district, so that was a very positive thing, so congratulations to Jack and Gabby and their team for those awards, so we're moving forward with that. Let's see, the last thing I want to talk about is the Stepney roof, and I know we talked a little bit about that, and I'm gonna let Jack and Gabby, if they have any specifics they want to share, they can go ahead.
You wanna start?
As of Friday, again, we're a week ahead, I did go up to the roof, I felt a little bit like Jim, walking up on the roof and looking at how things were being done, but Steve Battallo from Garland was there, he really, I think he's really keeping an eye on everything, so I, you know, you really feel confident when you talk to him about what's happening in the roof, so I was, I was really happy to be able to do that. We did meet a bunch of times to talk about the cleanup, and we're really confident that they have a plan and we have a plan, that the place will be safe and clean before school starts, after the roof project's done, so we're really confident about that, so, any specifics or anything else you want to say?
Yeah, the only other thing I just wanted to let the board know about is that that Rule 27 resource under Board of Ed links, one nice addition this year is Steve is doing the ramp reports, not just weekly this year, but they're coming to us just about daily, and they're filled with pictures, actual updates of what's going on, so it's a great way for the board and the whole community to see the progress of the work as the project continues.
So I have a hard copy of today's, this just came out about 5:30, so I can pass it down, if you guys want to look at it, it'll show you the new, the cafeteria area has been covered in metal, and it's a very pretty brown, the brown actually matches the color over at Font Hollow, so we kind of have the theme going with the schools now. And the sign went up that says Stepney Elementary School in the front, so that's, so it's getting there, there's progress being made. They should be done with the section over the office soon, so we can replace the air conditioning unit for the office, just as an FYI, the air conditioning unit in Stepney Elementary's office, it finally decided to, it was time, it was done. So it kind of worked out well with the roof project, but ...
Bruce, has office staff is bringing it at central office?
I'm sure Diane is very happy.
He's lovely.
Hi. Anything else? Anybody have questions for John? Alrighty. We will move on to old business, and we're gonna go out of a little order here, instead of starting with our professional development calendar, which is in front of you, we're gonna do item B first, which is approval of the bus contract with All-Star Transportation.
If you remember, at the last meeting, we talked to great length about it, and everybody seemed to be favorable, but we didn't have an official vote.
Okay. So we need to vote on the contract, apparently, we forgot that. So do I have a motion to approve the bus contract with All-Star Transportation as presented last night?
Make a motion.
Thank you, David. Second? Thank you, Alan. Any discussion on this?
Just a question, I know we still eliminated a bus, right, this year?
Yes, yes.
So that's within the contract?
That's within the contract, we eliminated a bus, they're doing the routes again, and they feel pretty confident, Gabby, that it's not gonna add.
Yeah, no, 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 it shouldn't, I mean, they're really, they really are pulling the roots apart and putting them back together, so the route should go up probably within the next couple of weeks, but, you know, if your child takes bus three, they might, took bus three last year, they might be on bus five this year, so I, the one thing I would, you know, and I'll encourage this again at our August meetings, for parents to really, please, please, look at the routes, and please make sure your child remembers what bus they took in, in the morning on the first day of school, because a couple of years ago, they, the routes didn't change, but they reordered the buses, and we had a lot of high school kids go, I don't know what bus number I was on, so just make sure your child looks at the bus that they got on in the morning this year.
Do you think that would be for the elementary kids? Anybody else have questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the contract? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will now go back to our Board of Education 2017-18 Professional Development Day calendar, it's in front of everybody, the proposed days, John, do you wanna, or, I'm sorry, Jack is gonna go over this.
Yes, Jack's gonna talk about it.
Sure, and in that handout, the backside does have a tally of your responses, just if you want to see how that all came out, and we used that information to put together the calendar, and just to take you a quick run-through, in October, we'll go through student data, November, we'll cover budgeting for both the building project, building process for the total budget, as well as insurance budget development, December, we'll cover communications, January will be a review of the Board Goals and Action Plan, I think we're also gonna touch on that in October as well, John?
We're gonna look at it as an administrative team in October to see how close we are to our 2018 goals, we may have to develop new goals if we've met all our goals, so we'll come back to the board in October to see how we want to move forward with that.
In February, will be instructional models used in Monroe, March, next-generation science standards, April will be about special education, including enrollment and law update, and then lastly, in May, we'll have a technology presentation.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to item C, which is fifth grade band and strings, as a reminder, last time, we did vote to eliminate the fifth grade band and strings program, they, since then, we have done a survey and ...
And Jack, just like to share the survey quickly.
Okay, great.
At the board's direction, we put together a survey to send out to incoming fifth-grade families, and we received 110 responses in total, which we thought was a very good response rate, and this is what we received from families. So first question, if the program is fully funded next year, will your child participate in fifth grade band or strings? And you can see, the response is very, very strong, 85% of families would like to have their child enrolled in either band or strings. Which elementary school does your child attend? We did this just to get an idea of how that enrollment would distribute across the district, you can see that Font Hollow numbers are really quite large, and then fairly even between Monroe, Allen, Stepney, Al. Which program will your child participate in? 62% were interested in band, and about 38% were interested in strings. If the program is not funded, would you consider a pay-for-play surcharge of approximately $175 for a before-school program? And even in this scenario, you can see the vast majority of families were favorable, 71% said they would still like their child involved even if they had to pay that surcharge.
So we looked at a lot of different areas, because, you know, I believe, and we all believe, I think, and the board believes, that these programs are important, that, you know, there are some kids who come to school because they love band, because they love strings, because they love sports, so we really looked at a way to not have to do pay-for-play. You know, we have the pay-for-play for sports, we understand that, it's been around a really long time, but we didn't want to have to look for pay-for-play for that. So what we did is, we looked at some savings, and the first pieces of savings that came, kind of came up, was during negotiations. Remember, we had to budget for this year, last December, so we budgeted a number for negotiations, and our negotiations, the way it all worked out, we were able to save some money on the four, on the three contracts. So we have with the three contracts about $45,000, $48,000 that we could save on the three contracts, that, from what we budgeted, so that was good budgeting on Gabby's part. We also have the savings from the library media specials at Monroe Elementary School, and that was a really big savings, because that person was at the top end of the scale, you know, again, left our district to move out of state, and we were able to save almost $20,000 there. So with those savings, we believe that we can put together a fifth grade strings and band program for our students, it will not be the same, it will be different than what we had this year. Now, if the state money comes through and the town gives us, you know, the part of the money that they're talking about, we can certainly go back and, you know, revisit this program and make it a little bit better, more like it was last year, but right now, we're able, we're gonna be able to have a strings and band fifth grade program that offers our students instruction in that area, so we're kind of excited about that. We have met numerous times, and we're pretty lucky in the administrative ranks, we have two former band music teachers, Jack Zamri and Jack Tekellini, both of which had successful bands, and both know music very, very well, so we've met a great number of times already this year and last year to talk about how we can do this. So we have a plan in place, we're very excited about that. Again, I want to say, it's not gonna be the same, but it is, if you approve, with these savings, if you approve us to hire a music person for the district that will help with fifth grade band and strings, we are gonna have a program for our students, and that's what's really important. What we, what we're gonna try to do, what we are going to do, is to schedule our teachers in the elementary school staggered, some of them are on the middle school time already, so that they'll start earlier and end earlier on the middle school schedule, and they'll be able to do the before strings program, where in the past, that has been stipends, it won't be stipends this year, and it won't be the same, it won't be as much time. If you approve, if you approve this, go forward, we're gonna look at K-12 music in this district, how can we really make this K-12 music program, you know, much better, and that's what we're gonna be able to do. We do have some opportunities with some staff members who have, who've left, and how we can shuffle things around, so we want to use this just as an opportunity. So I guess the question is, can we move forward with hiring a music person so that we can bring back fifth ...
I think that that's great, that we are able to adjust it, I know a lot of time and energy went into doing all this research and finagling this so that we can get it back, and I think that, as we had at our last meeting, when we discussed that this was important to all of us, and as we told the public and our parents, we're gonna try to do, work really hard to get it back, just give us some time, I think this is a great opportunity to get it back, and to show that we are committed to it, so, do I have a motion that we can move forward with hiring this person? Thank you, Alan. Second? Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this?
A couple of questions, John, this would be during school, a during school program?
No, well, some during school, like lessons could be during school, but they'd still, we'd still do before school for Stepney and Font Hollow, and during the first part of the day for Monroe, just like last year.
Okay, and I think from the numbers that you were throwing around, were about 60-ish thousand, and I think the program fully funded last year was 76.
Yes.
What if we split the difference with pay-for-play and put the full program in? That idea tossed around?
I mean, we could, we did talk about that, but we think we can do a program that'll work, and then next year, in the budget, I can put in the additional, I just, you know, we do a lot of pay-for-play, and I'm not sure that's the message, you know, again, you guys, it's up to you, but I'm not sure it's the message that we, that's not where we went forward with this.
Yeah, no, and I agree, and I'm all for this, I'm just playing devil's advocate a little bit, and then just for all of us, we're lucky that they found the 60,000, of all the programs that we cut, music is important to all of us, is this where we want to put the 60,000, or we want to put it towards something else that was cut?
No, I think this is the priorities.
I mean, then, it is what the ...
And hopefully, and the 60 should, will cover the teacher, that's what the most important thing is, hiring a teacher and getting the salary. If the state comes through with, you know, funding, then we'll be in a situation where we could probably put it all back, pretty much exactly as it was last year, but we just don't know that at this point. At this point, I would say, we should hire, the biggest thing is going out and hiring somebody and not, and finding somebody, because if we wait, if we don't find out until September that we have the money from the state ...
Right, it's too late to hire.
It's too late to hire somebody.
And their schedules have already been developed in the schools, so it'll be more difficult.
So that's the important thing of, if we're gonna do it, we need to do this now, so they can go out, advertise for it, hire somebody, get the person in place, and if the money comes in from the state, hey, that's great, we'll be able to put it back fully, but if not, you know, and we can still also cross that bridge, that if we do find out, because the program starts, what, around October?
Yeah, yeah.
Generally, yeah.
So if we can, if we find out, you know, you know, in September, we're still in the same position with the state, and we want to institute a pay-for-play, a small amount of money, where it's, I don't know, $40, $50 for the year?
Yeah, because it would cut down that 75.
Correct. You know, we can still do that, and we can still make that decision, I think it's just trying to get somebody at this point.
And again, to look at the whole program, K to 12, and see what's the best use of all of our staff, and maybe move some people around. And maybe move some people around, so that we can, you know, make sure we have that fifth and sixth grade, but also make sure the other programs are as robust as they need to be.
Yep. Jerry?
Not, not to channel Jim too, but I think our, our retired superintendent had shared with us that we, when it comes to pay-for-play, it can't pay for the salary of a teacher. Am I saying this right? He explained this to us?
Well, we have talked about it being more for the before-school stuff.
Right, which is why I'm totally for this. Because I think the other rule, though I, I do like what you said, you know, we could shrink it, we could make it for it. But I think this is the way to go in the beginning, to get the program.
We can expand it.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, to get that started back up again, so that we're not behind the eight ball.
Yeah, because we lost Mr. Martone, so.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And we're still looking to hire that position. That hasn't even been filled yet. So, we need to, everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right, so all in favor of posting and hiring for this band strings position? Great, thank you. Motion passes. All right, we will move on to new business. The first up, everybody should have in front of them, the little handout on the CADE CAPS Conference, which is November eighteenth, seventeenth through the eighteenth. Is it back up in Mystic again?
Yes.
Yeah. So, this is a two-day conference. Most of the times, everybody just goes for the first day, which is Friday. When is the cutoff that we need to pre-register by?
Yes.
To get the early bird?
I think it's a September date to get the early bird.
Oh, August 28th.
Oh, August 28th. So, if you can, it's cheaper if you tell us by August, if you can let Terry know or me know by August. And we'll just do the Friday. And if you could stay for dinner, there's, there's usually a good keynote speaker for dinner. It's a good way to network with other boards.
Right. So, if anybody wants to go, please let Terry know.
Jack and I are going to go. We've been, every, you know, I've been every year. Jack started to go last year, just Friday.
And the second page in has actually the schedule and the different breakout sessions and work, workshops that they are offering on Friday. Like I said, nobody usually stays over and, and stuff.
Saves you money.
For the district.
For the district.
Yeah. So, if you want to do that, just let Terry know. All right, next up is Item B, and that's a discussion of documents pertaining to the negotiations, strategies for our secretaries, our administrators, and our custodian contracts. And we are going to go into executive discuss, uh, executive session, excuse me, to discuss that. We will be coming out of executive session back here, because we will need to vote on the contracts. So, we will do, have business after the fact.
I'd like to have it, Jack.
Oh, yes. And we will be inviting into this both our superintendent and Gabby DeBlasi, our finance director, and Jack Zamri, our assistant superintendent for this discussion. So, do I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss these contracts? Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Christine, for the second. All in favor? All right, we will be on a short break.
Intermission.
Intermission. It'll probably be about, I would say, fifteen, twenty minutes at the most. And then we will be back here to finalize. But we will move on now to Item C, which is the ratification of the secretaries, administrators, and custodian contracts. Do I have a motion to ratify those three contracts as presented? Thank you, David. Second, Jerry. John, do you want to discuss these now?
Sure. I'll take them one at a time, although some of the things I'm going to talk about are pertinent to both contracts, to all contracts. The first thing, let's talk about the secretaries' contract. The settlement for the secretaries' contract is first year, 2.45 percent, second year, 2.45 percent, and the third year, 2.5 percent. And that's plus increment. With that, they have agreed to take the higher deductible insurance plan, which is 2,500 deductible for a single and 5,000 HSA deductible for a family. And they've increased their co-share on the premium to 16 percent. There have been some language changes, but the big change is in their contract is that we identified the post-retirement benefits that they get, money that they get for insurance after they retire, payouts for, well, that's for the custodian. So, we've identified these post-retirement benefits, and they've been sunsetted. So, that means future liability, we've, we've been able to do that. Future liability is less, because we've sunsetted those post-retirement supplements. The board has been doing that for all the contracts over the years. You know, the teachers' post-retirement and longevity and sick day buyout has been sunsetted. And now, in the secretaries' contract, that's all been sunsetted. So, that's very positive. The change in insurance, the extra percentage to the co-share, the increase in the HSA, really does affect those salary increments, those salary percentages, pretty much, it affects them. So, when you're looking at 2.45, we're, we're looking at something way less than that because of the insurance. It is, it affects, that insurance affects the changes. We were able to make this settlement, have this settlement, without going to arbitration or mediation, without spending the money there. And again, that helped us with the money, so that we could bring back fifth grade band. So, these, in, in the case of the secretaries, they were a great partner in this, in this. They, they really talked about how they, they understood the difference and the problems that we've had in insurance. They wanted to be a partner with that. And we were able to really get to this place, because they worked with us. Now, when you, we had an attorney there, of course, and the attorney talked about what the average settlement in, settlement in the state is. We are at or below, in those, in the three years, the average salary settlements in the state. So, we're happy with that. And we, you know, again, appreciate the secretaries for being a partner with that. The custodians, again, the same thing. Their increase is 2.545 percent the first year, 2.45 percent the second year, 2.5 percent the third year. We did some shifting. We increased the stipend for an electrician, which saves us money in the long run. We have an electrician on staff, a licensed electrician on staff, so we don't have to go out for that. So, we've increased that stipend a little bit. Again, they have taken that higher deductible, that 2,500 for a single and 5,000 for a family. And they are 16 percent for co-share on their premiums. They had a longevity benefit, that if you were here so many years, you got a bump in salary. That's sunsetted. They accumulated sick days. When they retire, they could buy back their sick days. Again, that's sunsetted. The post-retirement payment for insurance after they retire, that's sunsetted. So, we've identified those areas, and we've sunsetted them. So, again, future liability. I mean, we've always talked about that. The board has worked really hard on that. I, I think all, all future liabilities in all contracts have been sunsetted at this point. So, we're very, we're very happy about that. There are some minor language changes, some changes that helped us with identifying new staff members, hiring new staff members, giving us some flexibility on that, and just cleaning up some language in the custodians. The administrators' contract, again, administrators' contract doesn't start until next year. This year is the last year of the contract. As you know, in teachers and administrators, by state law, we have to negotiate a year ahead of time. So, the administrators' contract, and again, I also want to tell you that we had on the committee, Mike Manjos from the Board of Finance was a partner in that, on that committee, and Donna. And in the other committees, we had Alan and, and Donna on that. And Jerry was, was the board member on the Paris, which we'll bring next time. So, the settlement for the administrators, for, for the, for the three years starting next year, is 2 percent, 2.25 percent, and 2.5 percent. They have also agreed to the higher deductible, the 2,500 single, 5,000 family. Their co, their share of the premiums have gone up, first 20 percent the first year, 21 percent the second year, and 22 percent the third year. So, their premium cross-year is up to 22 percent. Again, we've sunsetted post-retirement supplements. We've add, in order to get that supplement, we did have to add $200 for people who have been here 20 years for that, the post-retirement insurance supplement, but it has been sunsetted. The other thing that the administrators did was that they signed an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, with the district that said, if there is a catastrophic cut from the state of Connecticut this year, and by catastrophic, we identified, over $5 million, they will take a zero and move their contract out another year. So, the contract won't start next year. They'll take a zero and then move it out three years following that. So, all of these contracts, all of these groups, really were partners with us. They understood the issue with insurance. They understood the, the financial constraints with, that we have as a state, and they were partners with that. And again, the insurance increases, they have not, all three of these bargaining units have a higher percentage that they pay toward insurance than they have in the past. So, that higher percentage, because they know the cost of insurance, that higher percentage brings down their total percentage increase, because they're paying a higher percentage in their insurance. So, again, good partnership. We had some really good sessions, a lot of good conversations, and we were able to do this without going to mediation and arbitration or arbitration, save the town some money, and we were able to use that money to bring back fifth grade band.
Yep. And I'll just second those sentiments. It, they, it was a real partnership between all the different unions and us trying to get to this place. All of them were very reasonable in discuss, in, in our discussions with them. You know, coming to a contract, as John said, they did totally understand the, where we are financially with the state of Connecticut with regard to what is happening with, are we going to get funded? Are we, are not going to have any money from the state? Every single one of them recognized that, knew the situation we were in, was more than willing to help, help us with that in these uncertain terms. So, we are very grateful for them for doing that. And again, also with insurance too. I know a lot of the times, when you talk about post-retirement benefits, a lot of people